This is the regular board meeting of the Hamilton County Commission. It's September 11th, 2025. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. September 11th is a day of memory, a day of reflection, a day of sadness. And we've got so much going on at the national level right now. So please join us in a moment of silent prayer reflective of all the things that are converging on September 11th, 2025. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Superflyer of the United States of America, the United Republic, which stands one nation under God, invincible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everybody in the audience. We've got a lot of folks from the library here today. Glad to see you. We're going to get started with introductions from the dais. We'll start with you, Kristi.
Chrissy Rieschel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. I'm going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? I don't have any comment cards. Do we have anybody online? All right, we will move past that and go to comments and motions of the Commissioners. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Thank you so much. Just a few comments. Since the last seven, eight days, I have been involved with Luke Blocker, who has been working on tiny homes. When I say working on, he has a group that's getting together to try to look at where we can have some tiny homes for our homeless veterans, first of all. And I had a meeting with him and I am very happy about what he's been trying to do. He has taken a lot of the leads that I have given him and other people have given him as it relates to land availability and other homeowners, residential owners, who are interested in the possibility and agencies too, that have land available for tiny homes. It's just been very difficult, very frustrating for me because I just really want to get them up and moving. So I suggested, for instance, Lincoln Heights has some vacant land that already has the plumbing in it and everything. So I feel very comfortable when he reported back about the people that he's been talking with and hopefully will be moving forward with that. I also had a meeting with the One Ohio RT Board, a virtual meeting as it relates to updates with the One Ohio Group and funding. And there's a second round of funding that we'll be looking at and trying to evaluate and have committees work on. I believe it was 4.5 million that we received for the second round. I'm pretty sure. I know it was at least four, four million. So Habitat for Humanity, New Home Dedication, I went to that and spoke for our Commissioners, another new home in Evanston, and it was just great to see. And Habitat for Humanity just keeps building and building. The owners, of course, have to be put some sweat equity in it, and it was just a great time to be there. I wanted to sit in on a virtual meeting that CPS was having as it relates to school attendance, transportation. I have heard some concerns as some of the young people are either not getting picked up or too far away from where they live. And I just wanted to sit in. It was, I believe, from like 5:30. It's supposed to be till 7:00, it lasted till 8:00, but very interesting. And they are working, the Board is working on some things to try to better utilize the transportation that they have. I sat in yesterday, a virtual meeting, Regional Maritime Committee, and they look at the river from Kentucky to, of course, Ohio, Indiana, and the transportation that is going on on the river. Talked a lot about barges and how they need more barges. And so it was, Bruce DeRose was on there, and he had a lot to say. He's been involved in transportation and cleaning up the river for, for many, many years. I attended just this morning, a joint visit, Cincy Meet, Northern Kentucky Board Retreat this morning. They had a guest speaker evaluating the destination of marketing within our area and also the responsibilities of the Board. And then I slid out for a meeting right after that with OKI, their executive committee meeting that they had. They had a four-year audit that was reported on. They did great. They were outstanding. They had six areas of innovation that they were complimented on. I would suggest you go on OKI's website. They have a housing data portion of it that you, I think people would be very interested in being a part of. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you very much. One of the things I do want to, we've been having a lot of, it seems like a lot, more than usual, cars running into buildings and facilities. There was one downtown Cincinnati at one of the restaurant clubs that ran through there. We also had one in College Hill that ran through apartment buildings. And so, and we also had one run through a church. And I want to send out certainly our prayers to, we've lost a life in one of them, but also to the different facilities and Overflow Ministries, Covenant Church, Apostle, Benny Fluellen, I want to send certainly our prayers to them. And wanted to, I know they're in Springfield Township. And I think we had worked with them before, Jeff, on, they had a community event. We worked with them on getting permits so that, because they do a lot in the community out there. Just wanted to check in and have our, our folks with small business and others to see if there's anything that is needed or we could do to assist them. Yes, Springfield Township, Overflow Ministries, Covenant Church, Apostle Benny Fluellen. We've worked with them before and I want to, if there's anything that we can assist with, I know they have to do somewhat of a rebuild out there, but just wanted to bring that. You'll touch base with them. Okay, thank you very much. Also, I attended the, the annual Urban League Gala. It's their biggest fundraiser and want to say that CEO Kristy Coons and her team did an outstanding job. They were at the Sharonville Convention Center. So we had a great time and raised funding, necessary funding, because I know that they've got staff and so forth, that she has to make payroll and all those things. And so that's one of the things, and it helps provide for other programs as well. And I believe Commissioner Dreehouse was there as well. In addition, also attended the 30th Anniversary Celebration of the Drug Treatment and Recovery Court. Want to commend Judge Sanders and all those that started the court. It was just a great thing to know. Thirty years and Hamilton County has been a leader in that area and has saved a lot of lives. And it was a graduation ceremony as well for those who have gone through the program and those who came back who said they have been successful because of the drug court program. So congratulations again. Also met with Sarah Irwin about the 2026 benefits. And I certainly, you know, we could keep what we have or we could try to cut. And I just want to say that one of the ideas was that we would cut out CVS Pharmacy and only do Walgreens and then do some others. I do have some concerns when we do these things. They look very good on paper, but getting people's prescriptions has been very tough. I've experienced it myself and others have as well. You got to go to five or six Walgreens to get two prescriptions. This one don't have it or that one has it. And I would not, I would hate that we would X out all options. We need to be, have all options and we're living in a world now, you don't know what happened. What if Walgreens get acquired? What happens then? I think we need to keep as many options and then Walgreens is shutting down in a lot of neighborhoods, they're not available. I remember one time I had to go all the way outside to county. They sent me to Fairfield just to get a something. And the person working there said, yeah, we, we don't have it like we used to have it. So I do want to put that on the table as a major concern if we start to cut out options for our employees. Some of these medicines are life and death. If you don't get your blood pressure, if you don't get some of these things, the doctor will tell you that you may have a stroke, you may die. You can't say, well, they don't have it at this Kroger, go to four more other Krogers. I mean, not Krogers, I'm sorry, four more other Walgreens to try to find it. So I just want to make sure that I'm not opponent of CVS or anything like that. I just, I'm a proponent of as many locations as possible for the employees. And just wanted to put that on the table as something to consider. In addition, I did meet with the new Executive Director, Jasmine Coestin, as well as Alan Woods, who's from Mortar, who's on the Board. She's the new Executive Director of Represent Cincinnati, and it was good to hear about what they have going. But let me just say this, to small businesses that are out there, I am very concerned about what I'm hearing, what I heard even at this meeting, the type of lease agreements that small businesses are kind of put into. Now, these are sometimes young businesses that are just excited to be able to have their business in downtown Cincinnati. And a lot of these organizations that we are funding, we're giving funding to, they're getting breaks, government breaks through tax credits, et cetera. My understanding is that these leases that they're putting, they want you to not only get a lease, but guarantee, personal guarantee on a lease. Never heard of that. Personal guarantee on a lease, and then they want a percentage of your sales. That is a recipe or disaster. They can open, but they probably won't survive. So I think we need to be looking into that. A lot of us, we had a lot of programs through ARPA, we paid the landlord, and the landlords are the ones that have these leases. I understand in Avondale, there's some issues as well with these type of leases. So I don't want, I want us to look into the Small Business, Office of Small Business, Jeff. If you would have them to work with these groups and look into these. I don't want predatory leases to become the standard here in Hamilton County. So just wanted to put that, that's something that I learned from our meeting. There are some upcoming events that I'm excited about with the 513 Relief Bus, Healthy Again Day, Healthy Aging Day, and that will be at the Word of Deliverance in Forest Park. It'll be on September 17th, this upcoming week, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Very important for seniors because so much is out there that seniors don't know if it's a fraud or if it's real. I get more seniors calling me saying, they hitting my phone with Facebook. Is this real or is this a fraud? And so at this event, we'll have a lot of fun. There'll be some line dancing and everything. But more importantly, we're going to have people there, you can bring your questions, is this real or is this a fraud? What's available for seniors? And I'm also going to be looking at working with Council on Aging to see how can we have a liaison that if you have something that pops up, somebody calls you, somebody hits your phone, some kind of ombudsman we can have that can at least look at it and say, no, that's a, that's not real or that is real. I think that's very important. If we could have that, it could cut down on seniors losing almost everything they have because there's a lot of announcements coming from Washington. And they say, oh, you're going to have this and, oh, if you're a senior, you got that. And they just don't know because it's just, they're inundated with it. Also there, I want to, we're going to focus on unveiling unclaimed funds, this initiative. I talked to the Treasurer, this initiative that I'm really going to be pushing because there's a lot of unclaimed funds. Even us on this agenda, we're voting to try to retrieve our unclaimed funds as a county. So we trying to get it as a county. I want the citizens to be able to get it and they'll be able to look at to that. And so Jackie Taggart with my office will be helping with that and helping to lead that to help people. At this event, we're kicking it off. The computers will be there, you can apply there, you can find out right there because we want to get, if it's the money that's yours, I'm sure you'd like to get it back in your pockets. So that will be happening on September 17th. Then we also will have, want to just remind everybody Pitch Night. Thank you, everyone who applied for Pitch Night. This will be our second annual one. I hear over 200 businesses have applied to try to be a finalist. And then the finalists will present on October 22nd at 5:00 PM at Memorial Hall. We have up to $10,000 that you can win to help your small business. And then also put on the calendar, October 15th, we know is Cancer Awareness Month, and the Cancer Awareness Caucus will be having education, awareness and prevention. More information to come. It'll be at the Urban League, Holloman Justice Center, and then we'll be across from the Urban League with free mammograms, et cetera. So those are the things that I am truly excited about. And of course, there's a lot more things that I probably have been, and I can't remember them, but those are some highlights. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Top on my list is a welcome to Aubrey Petrie, who is my new intern. Please stand, Audrey. Aubrey's here. She went through orientation this morning, and so she's, she's newly here, first meeting, of course. So welcome to the county. Thank you for your willingness to serve as an intern. We really appreciate it. A couple of things over the past week. We talked about overdose awareness month here in this chamber, but there were a number of events throughout the community. And so I especially want to thank the AAEW and the Addiction Response Council for hosting events to raise awareness about overdose in our community and try to make sure that people who are suffering from addiction understand that there are resources available and have access to those resources. I went to the one in Washington Park with the AAEW, and it was really a well-attended event. It was a very good event, entertainment and food and, and most importantly, resources available. I also, and I mentioned this earlier, I did a tour of Paycor Stadium a couple of days ago with Elizabeth Blackburn. One of the recommendations from the Commission on Women and Girls was to make sure that we had access to free period products in all of our county buildings. We passed this a long time ago as a Board, and so we did that quickly in county buildings, including this building and, and the buildings on our campus. We also had some success at state level, getting free period products in schools, but we had not talked about the stadiums. And so one of the recommendations was related to the stadiums. And so we did this tour and the Bengals, in partnership with the county, are going to, as we do all the renovations, make sure that we've got access to free period products in the stadium, not only for Bengals games, but also for concerts and high school football games and all the things that we anticipate using that asset for. We also did a tour of lactation rooms. There are two right now, probably not enough. And so we're going to be thinking about that and how to provide access for nursing moms when they attend events at the stadium. So I was, I was excited about that. I'm excited about the partnership. And Elizabeth Blackburn had a lot of enthusiasm for the idea. So thank, thank you to her for the tour and for being a partner in that. I too attended the Drug Court 30-year anniversary. Congratulations to Judge Nikki Sanders and the two judges that preceded her, who were the judges that conduct Drug Court. It is a powerful, powerful tool that we in Hamilton County have in support to provide, again, access to resources for individuals suffering, not only from addiction in this case, but also who have interfaced with the justice system. And so trying to get to the root cause so that those folks have the support they need and don't recidivate as they move through their lives. And so thank, thank you to her for the invitation. She had a great crowd, a big celebration for Drug Court. Many judges there, a lot of electives were there, but it was, it was a lot of fun and congratulations to her. I also attended the One Ohio Meeting. I am the Region Two Rep in Columbus for One Ohio. I do want to make sure that people are aware that the second round of funding is coming out by the end of the year. It is a little bit of a different process this year. It's more streamlined. And so if anyone is interested or has an organization interested in trying to access those dollars through the application process, please go to the Addiction, Office of Addiction Response here at the county and look for the details on that website because this process will move a little more quickly than the previous one. That's a good thing. The dollars will get down to the communities more quickly, but all that information can be accessed there. And then lastly, this morning, I went to the American Association for State and Local History Conference that is being held here in Cincinnati. It's, it's a, you know, a countrywide conference we're hosting. We were down at the Hyatt, and these are creative, smart historians that are in this community trying to learn about how Cincinnati does it, how Hamilton County does it, by way of museums and history and the arts. And they call it the cultural, you know, impact, the cultural economy. And it reminded me how important these cultural facilities are to our community, not only by way of the revenue that they bring here, which is substantial, but also by way of how we view ourselves and identify ourselves as Cincinnatians very proudly because we've got the Freedom Center, we've got Union Terminal, we've got Memorial Hall, we've got the Sign Museum, Harriet Beecher Stow House, and we've got so many assets, the libraries, so many assets, the stadiums even, right? And so we just, I think we just need to be reminded about how important they are, and these folks are trailing to many of those facilities. So I got to welcome them on behalf of the Board, along with Pavin Parikh, who talked a lot about the 250 historical celebration that he is helping to champion here in Hamilton County. So that's all I have. Jeff, I know we've got a couple of by leaves. Some of them are appointments.
Yep.
So, yes, yes, ma'am.
I was hoping that, thinking maybe you would bring it up. If I could just make a comment before we move to Jeff.
Sure.
And I don't want to ignore being a human being and also part of a political entity as we are, the tragic death of Charlie Kirk, a 31-year-old who was politically, he's a political activist, he was. And I pray for him and his family. I pray for everyone surrounding him and who supported him. And I just think we can't ignore the fact that we are a political entity and you never know where danger comes. And I just hope and pray that we pray for our nation. And I just did not want to go without speaking up and speaking out about such a tragic death of a 31-year-old. of a 31-year-old.
Thank you. It's a, yes, it's a very sobering day in many ways. So Jeff, if you don't mind, I will roll through the appointment items. I know item number three is different. So why don't I do the appointment ones first? And of course, the board has quite a bit of input related to all of the appointments that are in front of us today. So I want to acknowledge that these are very important positions, and we are grateful to the volunteers that are willing to serve on these really important boards. And we've got Aaron Brown here, and we'll get to that, and I'm sure we'll all want to have some comment to that. Why don't we do that one first? Let's go to by leave number two while we're talking about it. So this is a resolution, appointing a member to the Cincinnati and Hamilton County Public Library Board. This is a really important board. We've got a lot of intersections with the library. The library has been so important by way of partnership in serving the needs of the community, not only young people and learning and reading and all the things that you associate with libraries, but also the social services aspect, particularly at the main library branch, and the welcoming nature of all the renovations that are being done throughout the county. So I do want to recognize that. So Mayor Aaron Brown is being recommended to be our appointee to the library. So can we move through the resolution, then we'll open it up for comment? So I'm going to make a motion to approve of by leave number two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Adumas. Welcome, Aaron. We all know you. I'm glad you're willing to do this. Yeah, please come forward. We're thrilled, and you're going to bring that perspective from the north.
Yes.
All things the library. So welcome. We're thrilled to have you. Commissioner Summer.
Ditto. I was saying that you have this beautiful library that just was opened, and I was so excited when I heard that you were interested in being a part of the library board. It's so critical to our children and just having a place where they can come, not just there, but all over. And so thank you so much for wanting to be a part. I know you have lots going on, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Reese?
Thank you. As we're looking to fill board appointments with good, strong people from the county, and I want to thank you. When this board appointment came up, one of the things I've been looking to, you reached out to me and said, "Hey, I want to be involved in some meaningful boards." And when this came up, I said, "Man, this is a meaningful board. Maybe you'll be interested." You said, "Oh, my gosh, yes." And the fact that it is in Forest Park with a new facility, which is incredible. And I know Paula's here from the library, and I love the library. I gotta, it's hard. Every time I go to one, I said, "This is my favorite one." Nah, this is one of my favorites. But you can't deny what Forest Park, so I thought it would be a great thing to have you on the board. You hit a lot of components that I think is needed. And being, you know, you're mayor, but you're young as well, and you're doing a lot in Forest Park with the new facility, and it's just a perfect fit for you to be on the library board. So super happy to be able to have it done today and support it today. And I think it'll be just a great thing. Paula's ready to just work you to death. She's grinning over there. But the fact that a lot of the stuff y'all worked together on, and there were some, a lot of things, a part of that library that you played a major role in that. So we're just happy that you'll be able to, not just the Forest Park Library, but all. And of course, you have a background in development, and they do a lot of development. So I just think a lot of things, it just makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to definitely have this day happen.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief. Y'all know I'm also a politician, so I don't want to be long-winded.
Oh, okay.
But commissioners, thank you. It's always a pleasure to be before each and every one of you. County Administrator, Mr. Aludo, it's good to see you. It's actually been a year since the Forest Park Branch Library opened up, and I've seen the impact that it's had on my community firsthand. I would be remiss if I did not mention that my second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore, was very instrumental in doing a lot of grassroots organizing with the community to talk about exactly what we wanted to see in that facility. So we do thank her for that, but I've seen the impact. And once, I do want to thank Commissioner Reese for bringing this opportunity up to me because once I heard about it, I saw this as a way to give back because of the impact that Forest Park Branch has had on us in multiple ways. It's a multi-use facility, and it's also multi-generational. I see a lot of children going. The seniors are there. A lot of small businesses in our community are utilizing things like the Makerspace. And also on that side of the city in particular, it's really been a boom for further development and investment. So this is really my way to give back and thank everyone. So I thank all of you commissioners for approving this, and I want to continue to serve in this capacity. So I'm just really excited and really ready to get to work.
All right.
So thank you.
We'll see you around, yeah?
The children that have gone into the library?
Yes.
Are going in to read my book?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure they are.
Oh, that's right. There's the politician part.
Very busy facility. The rooms are always rented out. You know, I can't even get a room. So now hopefully this appointment will help me be able to reserve a room.
Well, there you go. Well, the Commission on Women and Girls alumni just met there on Saturday morning.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, I mean, it's fantastic facility, so.
Yeah. I've seen firsthand what the expansion project has done, so I do want to thank Paula and her team because it really is a boom for further investment. But the main investment is into the next generation. So, you know, this is a time where government institutions do need to be expanding resources to people and not, you know, closing our doors. So, but thank you. I thank each and every one.
Since we testified, wait a minute. Since we testified, there was a Sisney Black Music Walk of Fame, all the editing work was done at the library.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. The library team is here. Thank you for that. We've also got a resolution, appointing members to the Community Development Advisory Committee. This is by leave number one. The members are Kate Harrelson and Timothy Westrich. I want to make a motion to approve of by leave number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak to this one? Okay, thank you very much. And then we've got another one. It's by leave number four. So this one is a resolution, appointing members to the Hamilton County Accessibility Advisory Board. This is a new board to Hamilton County. We just passed the resolution about a month ago to establish this. The idea being that when we create policy and renovate facilities, to have the eyes of people with different kinds of disabilities on those policies and projects will benefit the county and benefit the residents of this county. And it's just, I think it's just a very exciting move for us. And so I do want to read out the names of the individuals being appointed to this board. It's Key Beck with Equitas Health, Erin Bligh with the Cincinnati Association of Blind and Visually Impaired, Kevin Flynn, former City of Cincinnati Council Member and Advocate, Samuel Folks is from Clovernook Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, Jill Gibbony is the Board Chair of the Cincinnati Accessibility Board of Advisors, Jason Harris is with Easter Seals, Joshua Kayes is a rep with Spina Bifida, Neil Kelly is a council member in Deer Park. He's also a JFS employee and a Sorna employee, appointee from this board. Molly Lyons is with LAD, Brianna Moss is a Northside Community Council Member and also a Sorna appointee, and Elizabeth Welpdale is with the Hearing Speech and Deaf Center. So as you can see, people with different kinds of disabilities are represented on this board, and I am very excited that these individuals are looking forward to serving in this way to better the work that we do by way of our services and our facilities. So I'm going to make a motion to approve of by leave.
I wanted to say something also.
Can we approve the, do you mind if we approve it first and then speak? All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve of by leave number four.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
I am more excited than you are.
How come?
Well, I think what's better than having someone who's intricately involved in this process of disability and all those areas that you came up with that we listed? Who can say better than us, but the people that are impacted? And I cannot believe that we didn't think of this before. And the reason why we didn't think of it, because we are not disabled. We're not experiencing the problems that they have. And so I'm so happy. And they came, what, about a month and a half?
We turned this around pretty quickly. For government, we did a really nice job of turning this one around.
Yeah.
It was Neil Kelly and Brianna Moss that brought it to us.
Yeah.
And they obviously are, they're both wheelchair-bound, and they've got a really unique perspective.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, but thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I want to just say that I think one of the reasons I thought we already had this, until they brought it to our attention, I am one of the co-founders of the city's version of this because I do have an understanding. When my mother was confined to a wheelchair, so it started, and that's why we got the curbs on the streets and different things, and they've expanded it, obviously. But they brought it to our attention. We didn't have it, and I was like, "Oh, I thought we did." And so I'm just glad that this board, we're moving forward. But I also want to say that as it relates to some of the projects, for example, Sisney Black Music Walk of Fame, we hired a consultant to make sure that everything is accessible. And I'm excited that we'll be having Accessibility Day down there. But it's always accessible, but we had someone in. But I want to thank both of them for bringing it to our attention. So now it's on everything we're doing. It's for the whole county, and other municipalities can also participate with us as we are moving toward one Hamilton County. So I'm just super happy to support this today.
Thank you. All right, so that takes care of by leaves one, two, and four. Jeff, by leave number three.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave number three is a resolution authorizing the lease of retail space. This is retail space at, it's a lease agreement between the board and John Green as tenant. This is at 1123 Sycamore Street, Suite B. This is the currently vacant space in the Park House Garage, formerly was used as a barber shop. That individual had closed shop. This is actually someone who is going to repurpose that space for a barber shop as well for accessibility by the general public. The lease, in your packet and as the by leave item, you see that the total amount of lease revenue over three years is approximately $40,797. Obviously, it escalates on a year-by-year basis. This comes with the recommendation of our Stadium and Parking Group, as well as the County Prosecutor's Office. I recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's so important that we have tenants in these retail spaces in our garages. Reminds me of the Findlay Market Garage where we're working to fill those spaces as well. So I'm happy to support this. Let's pass it, and then if there are any comments. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve of by leave number three.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Any comments or questions related to this?
Other than the fact that it was a barber and it's going to be a barber again, so whoever was utilizing it, I know it takes time to get adjusted to a new barber, but the fact that we were able to fill it with the same service, I think is really good.
Me too. Commissioner Reese?
I'm on board.
All right, thank you. I do want to say that related to retail space in our garages, I did have the opportunity to frequent one of the spaces over at Findlay Market Garage. It's the axe-throwing place. I got to tell you, it was fun. Axes and knives, so they've expanded from just axes. It is a lot of fun, and it's right there on the corner. I think a lot of people don't, either they haven't been.
Okay.
Commissioner Adumas, I know you're in that category, or they don't know it's there. But I got to tell you, it was fun. And so I just want to encourage everyone to just take a look, and if you're not into axe-throwing or knife-throwing in a very controlled environment, then you can go watch a game or have a drink or get something to eat. So I just want to encourage people to go take a peek at it. It really was, it was cool.
When you took a peek, did you?
I threw some knives. The axe was a little out of my league, but I threw some knives. All right, so thank you for that.
And commissioner, those are all the by leave agenda items. I have, if you would indulge me, just one quick comment. I know we have Employee Appreciation Day coming up next week, but I didn't want to let the opportunity go. We have an employee retiring at the county, Mr. Bruce McLean, who I think the three commissioners have met when you have visited our Burlington Field Garage. Mr. McLean is, for the past decade or maybe a little bit more, has been the Field Services Superintendent out at our Field Services Garage. He is retiring after 49 years of public service. So not all with Hamilton County, but he's been in other jurisdictions, but 49 years. So I just wanted to congratulate Bruce on his retirement, wish him the best.
Yeah, that's amazing. Thank you.
In case he's watching.
That's right, that's right.
In case he's watching.
In case he's watching.
All right, let's move to the regular agenda. The engineer is here, Eric Beck. Hello, Eric. Good morning, or good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. I don't think I'm going to be with you throwing knives.
It's a controlled environment.
Okay, all right. Just two items today. Item number one is a resolution authorizing an agreement for purchase of property deemed necessary to do repair work on the Berkshire Road Bridge. This is for a temporary easement in the amount of $1,800. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for emergency funding for a landslide on Padretti Avenue. This was caused by the rains early in the spring. We already have approval from the Ohio Public Works Commission. This is just to allow us to do the paperwork to catch up. They've granted us a grant of $707,850, leaving a $381,150 balance for the road and bridge fund.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Nope. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve of regular agenda items one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda.
You may want to order lunch, commissioners, because this is going to take a while. I'm going to really slow down.
Oh, no. All right, so he's slowing down for the interpreters. Anyway, here we go.
Commissioners, your consent agenda, item number three. This is resolution number 19, authorizing the county administrator and representatives to request unclaimed funds of the county. This was mentioned a little bit earlier. This is just putting in place the necessary resolution to allow the administration, when we see that there are unclaimed funds at the state that are available to the county, that we can apply for the reimbursement of those. Item number four is a budget adjustment, a total of $121,092. This is for planning, urban planning work at the banks and a sheriff marine patrol grant. Item number five is, we have a lot of vehicles on this particular consent agenda. Item five is the purchase of one Ford utility in the sheriff's office at $41,867. Item six is a then and now between the River City Correctional Center and BTX Coy for x-ray services. Item number seven is a purchase of one 2025 Ford F350 as a replacement in the engineer's office, $54,000. Item eight is also the purchase of a 2025 F350 as a replacement in the engineer's department, $54,800. Item nine is a credit card payment for the clerk of courts, $1,895. Item 10 is the award of a request for qualifications to JS Held LLC with Board of County Commissioners for Project Management Services, $450,000. That's for project management services overseeing the central campus renovations. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Ford F150s for the Hamilton County engineer, $93,884. Item 12 is the purchase of one 2026 Dodge Ram as a replacement for the county engineer, Item 13 is a correspondence from Tom and Rita Skeen requesting a vacation of Mound Drive in Whitewater Township. This is just to receive for the record. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the board and G.J. Burkhardt doing business as Fry Fastening with respect to an enterprise zone in the county. This reflects the enterprise zone presentation related to the project in Forest Park that the board heard about in staff meeting on Tuesday. Item 15 is an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and City of Harrison for a 2025 Economic Impact Grant at $130,000. and City of Harrison for a 2025 Economic Impact Grant at $130,000. This is for the facade improvement project in Harrison. Item 16 is a resolution related to a conduit healthcare bond issuance related to various facilities, some of which are located in Hamilton County. So again, this is a conduit hospital commission bond. Item number 17, we get into some job and family services items. 17 is a renewal of an agreement between the board and Modern Health Labs, doing business as any lab test now for substance abuse screening, $200,000. Item 18 is a single-source agreement with the Children's Center of Ohio for residential treatment services, $383,250. Item number 19 is a resolution, is a renewal number one of a single-source agreement between the board and Youth Opportunity Investments LLC for residential treatment services, $657,000. Item 20 is a resolution authorizing a renewal with Great Oaks Career Campuses Health Professions Academy. This is for nursing training for SNAP program-eligible customers. Item 21 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Public Children's Services Association of Ohio. This is for Ohio Start Funding. Start Funding is to assist families when the children enter our system due to substance abuse issues and trying to keep those families together or reunify those families. Item 22 is a renewal of the MOU with the, between the board and the Workforce Council of Southwestern Ohio. This is for the reimbursement of building service expenses at 1916 Central Parkway. We have item 23. This is a resolution adding a youth student member to the Community Development Advisory Council. Commissioners, that is not related, those are not, it's not one of the appointments that you made earlier, but this would be a future member. Item 24 is a resolution approving a Community Development Block Grant Service Agreement with housing opportunities made equal for fair housing services at $75,000. Item 25 is a resolution authorizing the filing of our 2021 action plan as amended per our recent public hearing on this topic. Item 26 is a resolution approving and authorizing a home art project agreement with the YWCA for $400,000. And item 27 is reporting no objection to one liquor permit application in Greentownship. And commissioners, that is your by leave agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. I wish the engineer were still here because we're doing so many vehicles. And they're at different price points, which I think is curious. I don't really have a question about it. I just think it's curious. I see the Fry Fastening, which we've talked about, is on the agenda too. And I do want to recognize that Harry Blanton from Alloy and Kelly Adamson, who runs some of these community revitalization grants, is with us today too, and James Neitz. So thank you all. Our economic development, you know, recommendations here, I think, are really important as we think about the work of the county. So thank you for getting these in front of us in a timely fashion. I don't, oh, and I just did want to mention item 23 with the youth advisory member. Hopefully, we'll be seeing more of these from our boards and commissions as we continue to strive to add young people's voices to these boards per a recommendation from the Commission on Women and Girls. So that's all I have. Commissioner Summer Dumis?
The only comment is, the last one you just made as it relates to adding young people to different boards and commissions. I had asked Jeff if the clerk could pull together the list of all the boards, and I can't really think of only a few that maybe they cannot or should not be involved with. But I think that's great that you guys are pushing that and that we need to, as soon as possible, get more youth involved.
Agreed.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, I mentioned earlier about the unclaimed funds. So that's item number three. That allows, as you said, the county to reclaim those funds where there are funds that should be reclaimed. I think that's great. I want to extend this in helping the citizens to reclaim their funds. And I know a lot of senior citizens don't know if this is that or this, this. So I'm looking forward to working with our 513 relief strike team through JFS, which we've helped in other matters, to be able to help citizens reclaim their funds. I know a lot of citizens right now, they said it's a lot of money out there. And I know they want their money back, too. People could use those dollars, I think is very important. The other thing I wanted to just, on the vehicle piece, and I know we get a lot of them, like you said, this time we had a lot more. I don't know if there's, you know, I see some there in other areas, maybe Lebanon or something. Do we have any in Hamilton County that we could? Because we get the sales tax even if we purchased it. We got to pay the tax or whatever. I just want to put that in there. Maybe there's something we can look at as we are purchasing vehicles. I know we had talked about trying to purchase some that are electric. And I understand with the sheriff, they got to be able to go fast. The battery cannot die down. We can't talk about, we got to plug up. So we understand that. But I also want to see if there's any way that we look at, are there places in Hamilton County that can be purchased? So just throwing it out there, it's not, not anything.
In terms of the actual place we're purchasing from?
Yeah.
So yeah, I can follow up with purchasing just to make sure that we, because I know in the past, we've had places that have sold the county vehicles from within Hamilton County. So, but I can follow up with them in terms of.
Yeah, just checking in, we got to.
The universe of the.
Yeah, yeah.
That we get it to, right.
We're in a, we're in some very tough, tight times. We've got to be as selfish as possible towards people spending money inside of Hamilton County, if we can, if it's a better, if it makes sense, obviously. That's all I have.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we've, some of them are Hamilton, but you're right. It would be nice to get an analysis of this, to see if we can prioritize county vendors. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve of consent agenda items three through 27.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no executive sessions today, commissioners, I know, right? So I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.